Good evening. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council from Monday, May 9th will be called to order at 7:05 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Arnett, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. At this time, I would ask everyone to take a deep breath and clear your minds and contemplate on the business at hand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Panaliti.
Present.
Alderman Budge.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Present.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Present.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Lippman.
Present.
Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Pfeifer.
Present.
Alderman Arnett. Present. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the first item?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to include the reconsideration of R-8-16 on second reader.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID-86-16, the Martha Wood Leadership Award to Dolores Turner.
If I can have Alderman Kirby and Ms. Turner join us down at the front.
It's Darlene Turner. City of Annapolis City Council Citation, Darlene Turner. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation in recognition of being the 63rd recipient of the prestigious Martha Wood Leadership Award showcasing your service as Secretary of the Harbor House Eastport Terrace Tenants Association. We applaud and thank you for your strong community commitment and demonstrated leadership to the various communities of Eastport. We recognize your ongoing efforts with the youth of Harbor House and Eastport Terrace through summer programs and outreach. We acknowledge that last summer you spearheaded a back-to-school program that provided 54 students and families of Annapolis with backpacks and school supplies to ensure preparedness for their school year, given under our hands and the great seal of the City of Annapolis this ninth day of May 2016. Mayor Michael J. Panaliti and Alderman Joe Budge, Alderman Fred G. Peon, Alderwoman Rhonda Pendell-Charles, Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson, Alderman Jared Lippman, Alderman Kenneth Kirby, Alderman Ian Pfeifer, and Alderman Ross Arnett. Thank you.
I want everyone to know that Ms. Turner has demonstrated in our community the true meaning of leadership and stepping in to do some community activities and things for the community, leading out. She had help, but she is what I would call a true dedicated community leader of the highest sort. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any other person who would like to present a report? All right. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a report from the Finance Committee on the FY 2017 Budget and Related Legislation.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. The Finance Committee, late last week, completed our work on your budget submission to us. There is a report that will be circulated for everyone to take a look at, which has a lot of information, but the general gist of it was a handful of amendments that dealt with issues in your budget. And I think for the benefit of folks watching, rather than get into the 55-page report, I would just share with the audience and a little bit about the timeline of where we're headed and the decisions that are to be made ahead. We, in the amendments that were, some of which were, I believe, one was passed unanimously, some were passed by a majority vote, but the four amendments of substance that were passed in the budget sort of dealt around the recommendations of the Financial Advisory Commission. And I would just want to read one little blurb from the Financial Advisory Commission's report to us, which says, "A budget that is balanced does not necessarily represent a healthy spending plan. At the most basic level, a sustainable operating budget is one where normally occurring and recurring revenues exceed normally occurring and recurring expenses. It is also necessary to establish adequate reserves to pay-as-you-go, to replace operating equipment and vehicles as they become obsolete, and to improve capital assets without borrowing." So when you see the report, those were sort of the themes that the amendments revolve around. As I said, they only represent a majority of the three of us, so now the ball is in all of your courts. And we expect there will be a finance, a public hearing at the next meeting, the 23rd, on the Finance Committee recommendations, the contents of that report, and the specifics, and then obviously action in the full council, and we'll see whether our recommendations can achieve a majority of the council and what other amendments we might have. So that's just for our folks in the audience and folks paying attention at home, that's sort of the process where we go from here. So we welcome people's comments and thoughts on the package that we put together and any other issues that maybe were left untouched.
Alderman Lippman?
Just for clarity and for our listeners at home, where can the public find the full report?
We'd like to know that, too.
I think as soon as the copies are made, it'll be, appear on the website, I'm sure, and the Finance Committee.
Will be attached as a piece of the legislation of the operating budget or operating in capital or what?
So each of those, the 55-page document, which is sort of a narrative that explains sort of the recommendations made on each of those, and then those will sort of link back in the report. But we'll, my hope is we can make sure it's sort of on the homepage, a place where people can be able to look at it, the way all of our council information is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes. A question for Alderman Pfeifer. So if the community would like to speak to the amendments from the Finance Committee, they will be on the city website under Finance Committee Amendment? I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm not, yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to get some feedback from staff of where exactly it'll be posted, when it's posted, but we can share that. But I think the usual format of the committees and the committee information, hopefully, could be there. But yeah, I mean, I think, I think we'll, my hope is, and as I understand from the administration, the plan is at the next council meeting to list the Finance Committee package, which would be those amendments, as a up for public hearing. So it'll have to go into the system at that point, that people will be made aware of it in the next two weeks.
So will the public hearing be at the next council meeting on the budget? Continued on the budget at the next council meeting?
I believe the public hearing. When is it closed?
I'm sorry? They close today.
They've been open since March 10th or the first meeting on March?
So the community will not have the benefit of seeing the Finance Committee's recommendations in order to speak to them?
We will be connecting that report to the budget ordinance and the CIP. Anything that it touches, if you pull up the legislation, that report will be a part of that.
We want to see it ourselves.
Well, but tonight is the last night that the community can speak on the budget?
No.
No. At the next meeting, right, it'll be on, I understood there was going to be a public hearing on the Finance Committee recommendations.
I mean, I'm certainly willing to leave it open, extend it for another two weeks, but even if the hearing was closed, that's why we have comments by the general public. You can come talk and count spot anything you'd like.
Okay. I think from the community perspective, they would like to have an opportunity during a public hearing to speak to the budget amendments.
And I think in the last year, Tim, and that's sort of how we've done it, right? We've had, after this, if there's any substantive changes you want to give people.
I don't have a problem. When we get to that point in the agenda, let's just extend the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, when are we scheduled to vote on the budget?
June 13.
Eight fifty-five.
Your meetings for June, the budget has to be adopted by June 30th, so your meetings for the month of June are the June 13th, regular meeting, and June 20th, special meeting. So you could vote on the budget at either meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that the public hearing remain open at least until the June 13th meeting. And I don't see why it wouldn't be open right up until the time we vote, but up till June 13th, that would be satisfactory.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, we haven't even seen the thing. Alderman Arnett is absolutely correct. I know he was being a little lighthearted, but I mean, we'd like to take a look at the whole thing. I think it's a little foolish to even think about closing, closing it to a public comment this evening, so we need to keep it open.
All right. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can address the council on any matter that's not already related to what's on the agenda. So if you came to speak about the capital improvement program, the budget, position classification pay plans, those public hearings will be immediately following this. The first three people signed up to speak are Alex Pline, Michael Ernst, and Peggy Summers. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Alex Pline, 305 Monterey Avenue. But I'm speaking in my role as the Chair of the Transportation Board on our 1416 Special Events Parking. So you've had, seen our letter that the board wrote, but I just want to reiterate quickly a couple of, yeah, it's on? Reiterate a couple of points quickly that we feel, so we're, we are not in support of this resolution. We feel that the current regulations for Parking District One offer the best balance between the stakeholders, the residents, the local businesses, and visitors. And we think that during special events, moving it to all residential-only parking offsets that balance, particularly in a negative way towards the local businesses. And that we also feel that it's largely an enforcement problem. And what we feel is different now compared to the past is now the fact that we have the SP Plus contractor onboard, and we're all very enthusiastic about their role in all matters parking in the city, but in this case, especially with respect to enforcement. So we think it's premature at this point to offset that balance without trying other things first. So I just want to reiterate those points, and I'll, I will try to stick around, so when you discuss that later, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or answer them now.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Lippman?
Excuse me. Did the board reach the same conclusion that I've seen elsewhere, that this legislation mostly affects the Fall Boat Show and the July 4th celebration, and nothing significantly more than that?
Right, so it deals with special events of 10,000 or more people. And that's actually one of the issues that we had was, that's a distinction that's lost primarily on most people, that, you know, how do they know whether it's 10,000 or not 10,000? So maybe somebody comes downtown during event, obviously people know the boat show is the boat show, but something else, maybe they come downtown and it happens to be a special events parking, and they see, you know, all the meter bags. And so our board has a very broad membership, and especially the business owners really feel that that sets the balance too far to one end.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Michael Ernst, and I am the new chairman of the city of Annapolis. We've got an issue, so please call in early and now. Now I'm here to speak at the same topic that the previous gentleman spoke. I am not in the board, and I am in opposition to the board's decision, and I am in support of the amendment as it's been put forward. The reason being is that it was stated by the board that you should leave things as they are, and what the board is likely to realize is that it's seven years, and I've been missing on the area of Annapolis. Prince George Street during all of the boat shows.
During all of the boat shows has been closed to residents only. This is actually a compromise that was made so that we limit the amount of resident-only parking on Prince George Street. Last year, Prince George Street was closed all the way from the Naval Academy up to college at St. John's College. And this compromise, as it was put forth, is when there are events that are 10,000 or more, up to 20,000, that Prince George would only be closed up to East Street from the Naval Academy, which would not detrimentally affect the businesses as it has been when the entire Prince George has been closed to residents only, and our customers, the only parking they have are the metered parking, which goes to, what the board said, goes to enforcement. If the metered parking isn't enforced and the residential parking is enforced, our customers have absolutely nowhere to park during the boat show or during any event such as the Fourth of July events. So again, I am in full support of the amendment as it was put forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Summers, 110 Prince George Street. And I'm here to ask your support for Alderman Budge's Resolution, R-14-16. This RPO is only for two events a year, July 4th and the boat show. Alderman Budge has his pulse on the neighborhood, and he knows how difficult parking can be for residents. As for the RPD hurting businesses, customers, some business owners and their employees use residential parking. They come out every two hours and they erase jog marks, so they are taking spaces for their customers. Enforcement, unfortunately, has been the worst I have seen it in a while, since the last Sunday in August. I live on the bottom of Prince George, between Craig and Randall. So since the last Sunday in April, I have seen three, parking ambassadors, they're called now, and I have seen two tickets given. I work fairly regular hours, and I walk my dog five or six times a day, and it's very obvious that there has been no enforcement at all. And so again, I would ask that you support Alderman Budge's Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Last person to sign up to speak is Carl Larkin.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I wanted to speak to two issues. One is the parking, resident parking only on special events, and the second is on the reorganization. I think you have my letter that addresses the subject of the special events parking, but I'm here to say that it doesn't affect me personally, because my wife is handicapped and we have a spot in front of our house. What it does affect is my neighbors, who have small children, who would be here tonight, except they're trying to get their children to sleep at this hour. So you would see considerably more people speaking in favor of this if those young children didn't need to be in bed. So I want you to please keep them in mind as you consider your vote on this important issue. Secondly, on the reorganization, I don't see how anything can, it may require some tweaks and modifications, but the fundamental reorganization can't do anything but improve the services to the residents, and so I ask you to support that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was just about to say, anyone else can now address the council?
Hello. My name is Karen Engelke. I live at 30 Corn Hill Street, and for six years I did the special events permitting under Ellen Meyer, Ellen Moyar, Mayor Ellen Moyar. We have 160-plus events a year. There are many, many more than the two or three that we're talking about this evening that impact the residential parking. On Corn Hill Street, there are 18 parking spots. There are 64 permits, residential permits, for Corn Hill and Fleet Street. We don't have resident-only parking under these enthusiastic visitors who come here to our city. So I would ask you that you really think about this, because I don't know, I don't know you, but I understand that there are issues about parking in downtown. When we have, on weekends, by the way, crossing guards, it makes all the difference in the world, not only to our visitors, but also to the residents trying to get to our 18 parking spots on Corn Hill. Fleet Street has none, by the way. So I urge you to support this, and perhaps even to extend it to Corn Hill Street as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Judy Jones, and I wasn't planning on talking tonight, so I have nothing really prepared. However, I live at 10 Fleet Street. I've been here for 32 years, and I've seen parking get worse and worse. Last year, at this time, well, no, actually it was June, I went over to parking and I spoke to Mrs. Fuller about my concerns about Corn Hill Street and the number of cars that park on Corn Hill Street without a residential sticker. In every case, they are workers downtown, or they are owners of businesses downtown. This morning, the same cars that were parked there last year are parked there this year. Whether they get tickets, rarely do they get tickets. They park for eight hours, and because I'm retired, I have to deal with this. The other day, during the rain, I had to park on King George Street, which is not a big deal, but I am 75 years old, and it's getting harder and harder to deal with this. I used to work in retail, and I had to work on Saturdays during boat show and, of course, the Fourth of July. Sometimes I had to park in Eastport. So what I'm saying basically is, please support and confirm Alderman Budge's resolution, because it really helps. Even those few days helped me personally a great deal, and I know it helps many of my neighbors who don't have parking at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? I'd like to take this opportunity for a second to talk about public safety. Article was written in the paper about fire response time, and the chief wanted to come forward and address the council on his facts on it. So Chief Stokes, if you could come join us and give us an update.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, David Stokes, my fire chief. The gentleman to my right is Deputy Chief Douglas Romali. About a week or so ago, at one of the Finance Committee meetings, the question about adequate facilities came up, and there was a discussion about ordinance in the city, and that led to a newspaper article about our response times, and there's many layers to that onion. I wanted to come in and sit down and talk for a couple minutes about our response times and clarify a couple concerns. So if you look at the adequate facilities, it's actually based upon a National Fire Protection Standard 1710. It doesn't reference 1710, but if you read the language and you've been in the fire service, you can look at that and tell that's NFPA 1710. It admits a lot of data from 1710. 1710 is a 30-page document. What's in the city code is two little paragraphs. So the gist of 1710 is the first unit should arrive within four minutes of dispatch, I'm sorry, four minutes of response, and the initial full assignment, which is 15 people, should arrive within eight minutes. So you look at the city code where it's written, it just says a four-minute response time. It doesn't really say when that four-minute response time starts. When you go back to NFPA 1710, that response time starts when that fire engine or medic unit goes through the bay door. The officer in the front seat pushes a button on a radio that sends a signal, that unit's actually responding. So from that period, four minutes, that clock starts to tick. So part of that whole equation in 1710 is there's a time period that the dispatch center is allowed to answer the call within a certain time period. They have a certain amount of time to dispatch the call, and once it's dispatched, we have a 60-second window to go, to actually go respond, and then that four-minute window starts. So the question is, first off, so you understand, why eight minutes and why 15 firefighters? Well, the eight minutes is, in theory, we try to get there before flashover, where actually the room actually basically explodes into flames. So if we can get there before flashover and contain the fire to the room of origin, the chances of survival for anybody in the structure is greatly increased. And it's also safer for firefighters to fight the fire if we get there sooner. So the eight-minute window is for that issue. The 15 personnel is, it takes 15 firefighters to do the minimum duties on fire ground to be able to flow 300 gallons of water a minute on a fire. So that's where the 15 people come from, and that's where the eight-minute window comes from. Now, when that standard was developed, there's a lot of issues in this city that's unique to us, but not only us, but other parts of the area. So a lot of things that affects that four-minute response time and all is actually order of dispatch. So when the call is dispatched, they dispatch eight or nine stations on a call. The first station that gets alerted has an advantage over the last station that gets alerted. The first station might have a 10-second window faster than the last station that's alerted to actually get out on the street and start responding. Another issue is road conditions. If it's snowing or it's icy out, I want our units to slow down and drive safely. Traffic condition is impacted. Trying to respond down Forest Drive at 5:00 in the afternoon or West Street at 3:00 in the afternoon can be exciting in the city of Annapolis. Street size. These streets were made for horse and buggies, most of them. You travel, take a 40,000-pound fire engine down some of these streets. You travel, take a 40,000-pound fire engine down some of these streets, State Circle, a lot of these back streets, they can't fly down these roads. Just one afternoon, go down to downtown Eastport and try to drive around a 60,000-pound ladder truck, see what it's like. All that impacts, impacts response time. Time of day. Obviously, if they're in bed at night, getting up during the middle of the night, it's slower than if they're sitting out in the engine bay during the daytime. The traffic comm devices, they're all through the city. They impact response times. Cross staffing apparatus. If we have a crude example, as Eastport, the crew that responds to the engine is also responsible to respond to the ladder truck. So if all their equipment is on the engine and the call's for the ladder truck, they could go to engine, get the gear, turn that gear, and go over and hop on a ladder truck to respond to. All that takes time and affects that overall window, that four-minute window. So there's other factors that impact, and this is the biggest factor for us. This has been discussed many times. When they go responding, there's a little button they push on the radio that sends a signal to dispatch that that unit's responding. And when they arrive at a location, they push a button at their own location of the call. That all timestamp the numbers. Well, when that officer pushes that button, depends upon the officer. Sometimes they do the thing to hop in the engine. Sometimes they get a location with a fire, it's a working fire, and they've got a lot of things going on. They go on the radio, they give their assignments, do all the things they have to do, then they push the button, and that changes that timestamp. And some of, it can be a lot, a lot of time. The other issue is, the city does this, and a lot of the progressive departments do this. If there's a house fire across the street, and somebody sees smoke from out the window, and they dial 911, our dispatch sends four fire engines, two ladder trucks, a battalion chief, and a medical unit. And they all go respond and lights and siren. The first unit that arrives on the scene, if Mrs. Jones comes outside and says, "I had a pot of food on the stove," and that's what it was, that first unit gives that status, but they also reduce everybody's response to what we call a cold response. It means no lights, no siren. Slows them all down. It's safer for us to do that, and it's safer for the public, because if we run down the road with a 40,000-pound fire engine, lights and sirens, sometimes bad things can happen. So a lot of progressive departments, and we do it, and a lot of departments do this, is we slow them down to a cold response. But the minute you do that, that changes that response time. So now, if they're getting there in eight minutes, they might get there in 10 minutes. They still come, but they come slow, no lights, no sirens. And there's other times when that first unit gets on the scene, Mrs. Jones says, "A pot of food on the stove," and they say, "I'm gonna hold the first fire engine, the first ladder truck, everybody else go available," and they leave. So we look at the report, the first engine got there in four minutes, first ladder truck got there in four minutes, nobody else got there to fill that 15 staffing number. So that impacts the whole number. So what I do as a fire chief, what I look at, I look at citywide, do we have a problem with civilian fire deaths and injuries? No, we don't. Or my firefighter's being caught in flashover, getting hurt, getting too late to a fire? No, I don't have that problem. The majority of the fires we have are extinguished very quickly with one hand line, contained to the room of origin or the floor of origin. I look at our first arriving officers doing the right strategy and tactics for the call they're on. Are our personnel following our safety procedures? Some are required by OSHA, some are our own internal procedures. What's our accident rate? You know, we stress all the time. I want these guys riding on the road in a 40,000-pound fire engine like it's NASCAR. Slow it down, get there safely, and don't get anybody hurt, especially the public who we're sworn to protect. So that's all part of that equation. So my concern continually is, as a fire chief, is when we have a fire, we look at the strategy and tactics and all those other issues, but I also look at what can we do as organizations to prevent the fire from happening again? A good example is the Naperville Jack Club Fire. That fire was over, we looked at it, we did a post-incident analysis of it, how we did strategy and tactics and all, but also answered the question, what can we do? What can we have done better to prevent that? And the Christmas tree safety program, we started that program. Obviously, we need to push it more, and the mayor has talked about this with me, about next year doing more for Christmas tree safety. We have a smoke detector program in the city. We go every, once a month, on one Saturday in a month, we go knocking door to door. Our goal is knock on every single door in the city of Annapolis to make sure they have a working smoke detector. Now, if they have one, they can get out safely. Again, that's part of the program. After the Jack Club Fire, one of our discussions was, we need to do training on fire extinguishers. And we wanted to do a program where we'd go to every city business and train their employees on how to use a fire extinguisher, when to use it, how to use it, and so we applied for a grant for $20,000 to buy a fire department simulator, extinguisher simulator. So after the article came out, we went back and with great pain, I paced my overtime to look at every single call last year, to take the ones where we got there and reduce it to cold response, threw that out, got the ones where we asked, actual canceled the units responding, threw all those out, looked at each individual call, and for overall structural fires in this city, our compliance rate is 73 percent, which is pretty good. But if you look at the ones where we actually had a fire, we actually got there, it was actually a fire there, we're at 90 percent, which is what the standard said. So you say, well, why is it 90 percent for working fires? Because when there's a working fire, all duty people respond, the fire marshal staff responds, the staff at headquarters responds, basically everybody's brother responds. So they get there quickly, and that 15 number goes up real quick fast. So I'm not concerned. If I was concerned, I'd tell you I was concerned. We do need to staff the ladder truck at Eastport. We've said that. We, I put that in my budget every year, and the mayor and Tom, I discussed that, and they understand the importance of it. The mayor understands there's issues involved there. But the article, you know, made it sound like we were struggling to meet 1710. To me, we're not struggling to meet 1710. On working fires, we are there, at 90 percent. As a fire chief, again, if I was concerned, even though it, I'm not concerned. I think you look at the stats, look at the civilian deaths, injuries in the city of Annapolis, it's not there. We don't have a huge fire problem in Annapolis. Can we make it better? Sure, we can make it better. And we're working to do that with our fire smoke detector program and other safety initiatives we have. Every day, we try to make it easier. It's much, much cheaper if we prevent a fire and just put one out. It's much safer for our personnel to do that as well, so. I thank you for the opportunity to be here. I just wanted to come in and clarify a little bit, I have some concerns about it. So if any questions about it?
Orderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you so much, Chief and Deputy Chief. I don't know if it'd be appropriate at this time, and Chief, you let me know. We received an email from the First Platoon Eastport Crew last week. Would it be appropriate to read it here or not? It's an anecdotal story.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Mayor? It stated May the 2nd, it states, "First Platoon Eastport Crew. I just wanted to reach out to everyone who participated in what seemed like a routine call yesterday. On April 1st, 2016, Engine 361 and PM 36 were dispatched for a medical assist call. While being dispatched to this call, I remember the address from a few months earlier. Upon arrival, my memory was corrected by who we had been dispatched to assist. The family is of Eastern Orthodox descent and were celebrating Easter Sunday. The last time we had been sent to assist it was Eastern Orthodox Christmas. The family, upon arrival, was waiting outside for our help to carry their mother down a flight of stairs. They appeared very happy and pleased to see us. This at first puzzled me, why our arrival for such routine call would bring smiles to the faces of the family members. You, as a team, worked quickly and as expected, removed the mother out of the second-floor apartment, then placed her gently in a waiting car. The family then thanked everyone. Then I heard a comment from a family member that they were glad it was the crew from Eastport who came to help. I was almost back on the unit when I, oh, something happened, when I, who came to help. I was almost back on the unit when I turned around and returned to talk with the daughter. The daughter explained to me that the other crew did not appear to want to be there, that they were happy that it was once again the crew from Eastport like on Christmas. I explained that it was not uncommon for us to assist families in this manner. She had great concern that she did not want to abuse the system. I quickly explained that this was well within our normal duties. We, as a crew, created a lifetime memory for this family. They, as a family, wanted to celebrate Easter Sunday together at home, not in assisted living center, not at an assisted living center. With the appearance and age of the mother, this may be the last one that they could celebrate together. So with a positive attitude, teamwork, and professionalism, we carried out a routine call, a routine call that the family remembered from several months ago, yesterday, and for years to come. Keep up the great work, Lieutenant John D. Buitch, Annapolis Fire Department, T E M S Team Leader, Forest Drive." I think that's indicative of our stellar fire department here in the city of Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Orderwoman Finlacy?
Yes. Chief, thank you. As you're aware, I, too, is a little concerned that that article would mislead the public into believing that they were not safe. And your clarification tonight, I think, would calm any concerns clearly. Stellar was the terminology that my colleague used. We have an excellent department, and I think the statistics speak for themselves. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you. Chief, just to clarify, are you making a request for more officers in this budget?
More firefighters?
Firefighters, I'm sorry.
The, my budget request contains additional staffing requests for Eastport's ladder truck.
By how many firefighters, or if they have a different title?
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen.
Okay. And if you're looking for more officers, sorry, what should I use? Firefighters?
Firefighters.
All right. If you're looking for more firefighters, you're trying to address a need that's not being met. So can you help me identify what that need is?
The Eastport ladder truck was staffed at one time in 2011, when they had the budget crisis. We did an early buyout, the city did an early buyout, and we lost 14 positions, basically lost the staffing on the ladder truck. At the time, I was told that staffing would come back a year later. It hadn't come back yet, obviously, still not staffed. So the Eastport, the crew at Eastport staffs the ladder truck, the fireboat, and the fire engine. That's what they, they staff in three pieces. So there are times when they're spread kind of thin, and the issue for me is if Eastport's engine is out on a call anyplace in the city, there's another call in Eastport's area, instead of having the ladder truck there to respond to that call, you have to wait for either Station 8 to come in or the, I mean, the Forest Drive Station responding to Eastport. So the staffing on that piece would obviously improve service in the Eastport area, but also it helps us meet that NFPA 1710 15 personnel standard.
I guess I'm still struggling with trying to reconcile the previous comments that your department is able to, you're not having increase of accidents, you're not having a lack of service, basically, but yet you're still looking for the, I'm having trouble reconciling those two, change of thoughts, and maybe it's just because we're putting you in a possible situation where you have no choice but to say what you're saying, but I'm still having trouble reconciling it.
I'm not sure I'd answer it, but you're quite right. I mean, it's, it's, it's all about staffing and personnel. So I guess if, I'm trying to think of a way to say this, so if, yeah, three people have the fire pit at Eastport, two are in a medical unit, three are in engine, and the fire engine is out on another call, and you're the guy down Second Street having chest pains, you gotta wait for Forest Drive to show up versus having Eastport's ladder truck to show up, that staffing is very important to duplicate those services, and that's what we're looking for. If that makes sense?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Budge?
Yeah, I apologize for being a little bit behind the class in fire engine math. Do the other fire stations in Annapolis have two fully staffed engines operating all the time?
Well, the Teller Administration has a staffed ladder truck and a staffed fire engine. Forest Drive just has a staffed fire engine. And Eastport has, Eastport has the additional duty of the fire boat, so they have one crew to staff, whichever goes out first, fire boat, engine, or the ladder truck.
Got it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kirby?
Thank you, Chief. Can you, for the benefit of my colleagues who may have missed it, on the same day that article appeared, did the Annapolis Fire Department get some type of accreditation medal or honors?
Yes, thanks for mentioning that. The International Association of Fire Chiefs has an annual convention. Part of that convention, they issue several awards in several different areas. One of them is a safety award. So the Annapolis Fire Department is receiving the International Association of Fire Chiefs Annual Firefighter Safety Award for all the activities we've done over the past couple of years to improve firefighter safety. So the award is giving, is being given in San Antonio, Texas, this year, and it's 30,000 fire departments in this country, and we're getting one, we're getting an award for safety. So it says a lot about what we've done in the past several years to try to improve firefighter safety. And there's many components to that. We've done a lot of good things. And if we've done it, we've done it. We have done this in partnership with the Carol Spriggs, and we all meet to discuss the safety issues, we work toward getting funding, and I appreciate the council's support of those activities, and we're a very safe fire department, very proud of that fact, and it's nice to be recognized for our efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. No one else wants to come forward? I declare petitions, reports, and communications closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar.
Is there any order person who wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar? Alderman Littman?
I'd like to remove R 1516, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes. Oh, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlacy?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes unanimously have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing continued, beginning with Ordinance O-13-16, Annual Operating Budget Fiscal Year 2017.
Nobody signed up in advance to speak. If you'd like to address the council on this subject, please come forward. Seeing no motion, seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing open at my colleagues' request until the second meeting in June. So the first meeting in June?
It kind of needs to be on the 13th.
All right. So June the 13th. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-10-16, Position Classifications and Pay Plan.
Nobody was signed up in advance. If you'd like to address the council, now's your chance. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R 1016 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-12-16, FY 2017 Fee Schedule Effective July 1st, 2016.
Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing no motion, along with the budget, we'll leave this open until June the 13th. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-13-16, FY 2017 Fee Schedule Effective July 1st, 2016.
Would anyone like to talk to the council about this subject? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R 1316 open until June 13th. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing beginning with Resolution R-11-16, Capital Improvement Program Fiscal Years 2017 through 2022.
All right. There's three people signed up to speak, Karen Ingleke, Pat Zino, and Sarah Alfreds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Honored Order-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and honored alderfolk. As I said earlier, I live at 30 Corn Hill Street, and all of the owners on Corn Hill Street are very concerned that the money to re-brick Corn Hill and Fleet has been taken out of the financial report. This is a very serious issue. This started back 2005, 2006, when there was a proposal for undergrounding all of the wires, and there was actually money to do that. Unfortunately, the project grew to include water, sewer, and gas lines. We have those. We still have those hideously ugly sidewalks. I know that there's a great focus this year on public safety. There are thousands of people through the year that walk down Corn Hill Street. They will not walk on the sidewalks because they're so buckled and broken. I personally have broken the major bones in my left foot, and separately, my femur. And thousands of dollars. The homeowners are putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into our homes. It doesn't sound like a lot, but believe me, it is. The homes that on Fleet Street were going for one fifty, two hundred thousand dollars are now over half a million dollars. These are two-bay houses. The house across from me, the Brewer Tavern, has been rehabbed with interior and exterior easements. We're keeping our promises. I've put over two hundred thousand dollars into my home. We are upholding our duties and our pleasure living downtown. I love it. I wouldn't live anywhere else, but I don't walk on the sidewalks anymore. Our taxes are going up because the values of our homes are going up. This can only continue. Corn Hill and Fleet are major passageways between the Capitol and the market house. Baby buggies, little kids, skateboarders, cars going forty-five miles an hour. These are really dangerous situations, and we would like the city to keep its promise to take care of its infrastructure, because we are definitely taking care of ours. Please reconsider this. We need this. It is a major safety issue. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could, I'm sure you'll see it in the finance committee recommendations. This issue was brought up by Alderman Budge at the Finance Committee, the sort of adding that back into the C I P that was presented initially in the mayor's budget that left it out from last year. The senses, my sense is that when we get to the full council vote on the budget, it'll likely be offered again. So I think it's helpful to have you chime in. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Please reconsider. We need those safe sidewalks. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Zino. My husband and I live at 57 Corn Hill Street and have for over twenty years. I am here tonight to talk about Corn Hill and Fleet Streets. Over a year ago, it was determined that the condition of both the gas lines and water mains on Corn Hill and a portion of Fleet Streets were deteriorated to the point of being dangerous. Both were replaced last year in an extensive seven-month project. During the project, Corn Hill Street was completely torn up, and extensive damage was done to our, our already deteriorated curbs and sidewalks. We, my husband and I, our neighbors, our Alderman Joe Budge, met with David Gerald, the head of Public Works, to voice our concerns and complaints and to seek a solution. Mr. Gerald was clear at that time, that at the time, there was no money in the capital improvement budget for repair and improvement. But something had to be done. We had no street, so he suggested a temporary fix. The street would be resurfaced in asphalt, undersized, temporary curbs would be added where necessary, so there would be an edge for the asphalt resurfacing. Damaged and missing sidewalk bricks would be rebedded. He committed to us that the money needed to correctly repair the curbs and sidewalks would go into the 2016, 2017 budget, which it did. In addition, as required by city code, an application for this temporary fix was submitted by Public Works to the Historic Preservation Commission. A certificate of approval was granted on January 7, 2015, with the following amendment, that Public Works would come back to the H P C within one year with a proposal for replacement of the temporary curbing with a historically appropriate replacement. A D P W representative appeared before the H P C on April 28 with the proposed plan, and in full disclosure, I am a longstanding member of the H P C. I recused myself from both of those hearings. So every, all the information I have is public information. So far, it is all working as it should, wouldn't you say? With the following exception, the money allotted for the project has gone away, not simply moved to a later year, but gone, zeroed out. Alderman Budge wrote an amendment to add the funds back into the budget, but it was my understanding that it is not among the Finance Committee's recommendations. So that is a change. Now, you might be thinking that it is, in case you don't want to vote for this, you might be thinking that it is pretty self-serving of me to stand up here and ask for money for my street to be put back in the budget. If so, you are being short-sighted. Corn Hill Street runs one way from State Circle to City Dock. It is the primary artery to and from the State House into our waterfront. Thousands of people, business, local legislators, tourists walk, cycle, or drive down our street every year. Some of the oldest houses in the historic district are on Corn Hill Street. In a short two-block span, we have six houses dating from the 1700s. It should be our best foot forward, a jewel of a street showcasing some of the historic architecture for which our city is known and which is a main draw for tourists. Instead, it is crisscrossed by overhead wires. Curbs are a mishmash of worn and broken materials. Brick sidewalks are deteriorated in some areas to the point of being dangerous, forcing people, including families with children and baby carriages, to walk in the street. Second, this is not the first time that the city has reneged on a commitment to repair Corn Hill and Fleet Streets. And Ms. Inglekey went into the plan from 2007 that was totally to redo the street, including undergrounding the overhead wires, as was recommended by our fire department. As homeowners in the city, we have a legal commitment to pay property taxes, not just to the state and county, but also to the city. I don't think you would give me a pass if I came before you and said, "I've had a bad year financially. I don't think I'll pay my taxes." Nor should the city get a pass on keeping our streets and our infrastructure maintained. So I ask, too, that you approve Alderman Budge's amendment, that you put the money back into the budget, and that you do the restoration and renovation of Corn Hill and Fleet Streets. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Alfred. I live at 124 Prince George Street. I'm also a member of the Ward One Residents Association, and I'm here to reiterate the two speakers before me and remind the council that Corn Hill Street is, obviously, the repaving is essential to the quality of life of the residents of Corn Hill Street, but as Ms. Zino mentioned, it's essential to the quality of life of all residents of downtown. I use Corn Hill Street to go from Prince George Street to the State House nearly daily. I challenge anybody on the council to walk up those sidewalks in high heels and see how you would do on a daily basis. It's important to the residents of Corn Hill and the residents of downtown. Thank you.
I was the last person signed up to speak. If anybody else would like to come forward. Seeing no movement, I declare the public hearing open until June 13th. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-1416, Capital Budget Fiscal Year 2017.
Nobody was signed up in advance to speak. If you'd like to come forward. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on O-2016 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-2016, Title 17, Updates and Amendments.
Is there a motion to adopt R-1416 on second reader? I'm sorry, R-1416 on second reader.
So move.
All right. There's one amendment, the Budge amendment, and I'll let the author of it speak to it at this time.
The Budge amendment is actually in two parts. This is, and both parts adjust the wording of the parking spaces that are described on City Dock to be consistent with the language that's in O-12, O-16, excuse me, that we just The, it changes the description of pay and display spaces on City Dock to parking meter regulated spaces, and then specifies between Dock Street and Craig Street and Susan Campbell Park, and between Randall Street and Craig Street. So that's, it's essentially a technical change in the wording to make it consistent with the ordinance that we just passed and clarify things a little bit while we're at it. So that's the amendment.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, second. Thank you, Alderman Arnett.
Oh, okay.
All right. All in favor of the Budge amendment, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt R-1416 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Buggs?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is O-0916, Removing Members of Boards and Commissions.
Is there a motion to adopt O-0916 on second reader?
So move.
Second.
All right. We have two amendments here, the proposed rules amendment and the Budge-Arnett amendment. I'll let the author speak to them at this time. Alderman Arnett?
Trying to catch up. So these are basically wording amendments. The member must appeal within thirty days is Amendment One. Amendment Two is to change the nomenclature from a capital C to a small one. Motion Three is to strike section and insert paragraph B. And Amendment Four, and you can see life is very boring on the Rules Committee. Amendment Four is to insert a statement on line 31, holding more positions than are permitted under Section 204040 of the city code, which is a required statement because that's not allowed.
All right. All in favor of?
This is the first one.
Oh. We will read the second one, and then we'll vote on it.
First or second? You can do each amendment separately.
All right.
It's been moved.
Right. All right. Let's put a vote on the First Amendment first. So all in favor of the First Amendment that was read, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it.
You're not going to take them as a group?
Yes. Actually, let's do that. Is there a motion to adopt the amendments as a group?
So move. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
The Budge-Arnett amendments make some substantive changes in the way the appeals process works and some of the cause statements. First Amendment recommends striking the word misconduct from the cause, one of the cause clauses that currently reads malfeasance, misconduct, or abuse of office. Misconduct is a word that while it has a fairly clear legal meaning, it also has a common meaning that is very easy to misinterpret and interpret too broadly. So we think it's the best course of action to take it out of here and rely on the other phraseology in the ordinance to cover the eventualities of what we would call misconduct. The Second Amendment that I'm offering, or that we are offering, removes the mechanism for the council to remove a member of the board or commission in the eventuality that the mayor fails to act. The, we are replacing that with a requirement that if the mayor decides not to act on removing someone, periodically, the mayor will report to the council that I decided not to remove somebody, and here's why. And towards that end, the amendment says to strike all of paragraph C and its subparagrafts. The Rules Committee amendment that we just adopted got rid of, moves paragraph C under B, so we can strike the back end of this and just strike paragraph B. And finally, it's come to our attention that some of the boards and committees that are defined under state law have procedures for removing members that are also defined under state law. And so the final amendment is to, it says that the city law doesn't apply when, or this particular city law, excuse me, doesn't apply under circumstances or two boards and commissions where state law or other city law has already been created to specify how the members may be removed. So I guess that's my motion.
All right. I would say we vote in them as a block.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three amendments to offer. The first starts on page two, and it starts on line 22. This is a, this is one of the definitions of cause. C refers, says right now, in attention to chapters, and then it lists 2.04, 0.07, 0.08, and 0.09 of the Annapolis City Code. All three provisions, I believe, are really requirements of the commission or board as a whole, not of any individual. And so I don't think a violation or failure to accomplish any of those things should be a reason for suspending an individual member. And to give a little bit more clarity, .70 refers to minutes of proceedings and states that each board, committee, or commission established under this chapter shall keep minutes, and then the minutes shall be provided to the city clerk, et cetera. 80 refers to bylaws. Again, a committee or commission or board activity, not an individual member. And 090 refers to posting regulations on the city's website. So I don't think any one member should be held responsible for those requirements. So my, my motion, so I'm sorry, my amendment number one is to strike C in its entirety, which is lines 22 and 23 on page two. Do you want to pause for any discussion before? Do you want to pause for any discussion before I move on to amendments two and three?
I would, I haven't seen these amendments before.
Yeah, they're not written.
Right.
I'll make them now. So do you want to discuss those before moving on to amendments two and three?
I would, could you repeat them again?
I would prefer to take these amendments separately.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll read it again. So amendment number one refers to page two, line twenty-two and line twenty-three, and is to strike lines twenty-two and twenty-three. That's the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, and so what you're saying is the three code sections and those two lines refer to things that committees do, bodies do, but not individual members are responsible for, so it shouldn't be a firing offense for something that you're not specifically responsible as your own duty.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you.
Discussion? Alderman Budge?
Yes, these sections are mentioned in the cause because it is a duty of specific individuals in the committees to cause those documents and events to happen. It's the duty of the secretary of the committee to create the minutes. It's the duty of the chair to make sure that the results and the rules and regs of the committee are posted, that they have bylaws, and that the bylaws are followed by the committee. If though, if the, if a, if we have quote-unquote a rude chairman who decides to ignore the bylaws, ignore or a secretary that decides they don't care, that we don't need minutes after all, I think they should be held accountable. And that's why this is listed here in the cause section.
If that argument was to be, to follow to its logical point, then I think it needs to be clear because right now it just says essentially any member belonging to a board, a commission, board or commission who fails to do those things is violating, would be subject to removal. And so if you take, say, the Transportation Board and you're not the chair and you're not the secretary, you're still subject to removal for cause. If that committee, because of the code itself, does not say only the secretary is responsible for those duties, it does not say only the chair is responsible, it says the board or commission is responsible for those duties, whether it's for minutes or posting regulations, et cetera.
As for a legal interpretation, I'm not sure.
I, I, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to talk about this before. I think there are, there are two issues. And, and the first one is, as you said, reading it literally, any member is responsible. But if you look throughout the code and typically throughout the bylaws of an organization and what various officers' responsibilities are, members of boards, it specifies that certain individuals are responsible for certain things. The example I can think of, however, that goes to this point, which is a bit draconian, but if for some reason, an organization cannot agree on its bylaws, there's changes in the wind, and the entire board refuses to take it up. I mean, there's case law in this, that the entire board can be removed. And so each member is individually responsible for moving something forward. And typically, in those cases, what has happened is, as you said, there's the issue of the rogue, but the entire board has gone rogue. And the authority that they typically answer to commands them to move in a direction and they just absolutely refuse to take any action. Now, if they voted no, they'd be fine, but if they take no action, they are held accountable for that. So, again, a rather draconian and unlikely situation. But with regard to the situation we face here, I, I would expect that were this to arise, one would have to be charged with that specific duty. But making that clarification would, would cause me any problem. I don't think it's necessary, but I don't think it would cause a problem.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got these out right now and I'm reviewing them quickly. I, I don't disagree with your basic premise. I think they all are requirements of a committee, but what if the whole committee votes not to file an annual report? Or the whole committee votes not to keep minutes or votes to not put this on the city website? Wouldn't you agree that that's probably some pretty basic misconduct in light of what the City Code tells us needs to be done?
You know, I'm not sure what the, the logical end on that point is, what you do, but to Alderman Budge's point, Alderman Budge's point, these are, if these are going to be referred to as requirements of a specific person. If your, if your chair doesn't fulfill its obligation, why, why should you be held to that responsibility? And in a situation where we're talking about volunteers who are serving voluntarily, I think we owe it to them to be as clear as possible and to not appear, not to leave opportunities for draconian conduct.
But I, I was ready to go along with, with, with your amendment to delete this until, that was the only thing, only situation I could think of where it comes into individual misconduct. I mean, we, you know, the committee up and does something they really don't have the authority to do, and it's unanimous. I mean, if it's two to one, or, you know, five to four, you know, certainly the four people that wanted to post this wouldn't be subject to it, but when five people vote to violate the City Code...
I would refer you to the first word of that paragraph, inattention to these provisions. So it's not like they're, it's not, it doesn't say maliciously or by negligence even, it's, we're just doing, you know, they just, by inattention, they fail to file bylaws, that seems pretty draconian to me.
Okay, I had, I had in mind an intentional act of some kind.
And maybe if we change the, maybe if we change the wording to an intentional failure to comply with those chapters, maybe that would be an improvement and solve the issue.
Alderman Arnett?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know what the nature of the other three amendments are, but I would suggest, given the amount of dialogue we've had here, rather than trying to make off-the-cuff decisions, it would be better to postpone a vote and get the amendments and be able to analyze it and have the Office of Law analyze them. So I would move, we postpone.
Chair, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Pan?
Mr. Mayor, I also was going to, I was looking at, going through this in preparation for the meeting tonight. The only thing I could see, or at least that I did see, was the thirty days to take an appeal. That seems like a relatively lengthy period of time. That's fine for a court proceeding, but I don't know why you would need thirty days to take an appeal. I was going to amend it maybe to ten days from the time it's turned over to your office, which would be a few more days, would actually probably be fifteen or twenty days from the timely decision. I just thought thirty days was a little bit long. That's my only criticism.
All right. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, could we ask that this come back to the Rules Committee? And we could entertain the, the amendments from Alderman Littman and Alderman Pan and anybody else that may have them.
Just for, to relieve any mystery, I'll just mention what the second and third amendments were, and then I'll be happy to consult with the Rules Committee and put it in writing with help from the City Attorney. The second one was going to be suggesting page two, line thirty-four, removing the paragraph, what was G, but with the other amendments became H. That starts with subject of a court-ordered action. This refers to the Open Meetings Act. And essentially what it's saying is if there's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, you could be subject to removal. My suggestion is that if it's a purposeful disregard for Open Meetings Act, it's covered under malfeasance or abuse of office. We don't need to specifically list Open Meetings Act. There's, there's danger there and overreaching, too. And so that's why I raised that, and again, we refer to that to rules. The Third Amendment is just for clarification, on page three, line eight, where we say that the mayor needs to provide certain information to someone that's being removed, including the opportunity to appeal the decision. My suggestion is to add in the words and stating by when and to whom to do so, so that it's clear to the person receiving that notice that they know by when and to whom they should file that appeal. So that's for adding clarity. Is there a date you'd like to postpone until?
When's the next Rules Committee meeting?
Tomorrow, but we've got a pretty full agenda, if I'm correct, so.
When's the next one after that?
Uh, next month.
Okay, so June, so first meeting in July?
How about first meeting in August?
All in favor to postpone until, yeah. All in favor of postponing until the first meeting in July? Please say aye.
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 All opposed?
I mean, I'm in favor of postponing, I don't think we need that much time.
He said July, so. I wasn't on his discretion. I was just listening to, I didn't get a date for when the Rules Committee is meeting in June, so I just wanted to make sure we had a week or so after that.
Better, you know what? I'll change that to, to an aye, and I just didn't think it needed to be postponed that way.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is CA-1-16, Departmental Reorganization.
Is there a motion to approve CA-1-16 on second reader?
So move.
The reorganization, is there a second? All right. There are a number of proposed amendments. And I will let the authors of those speak to them at this time. And the first one is from Alderwoman Pendell-Chris, the next one is from Alderman Budge, and the third one is the Rules Committee Proposed Amendments. So Alderwoman Pendell-Chris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three amendments, and the first two are just English changes here. Page two, line forty-five, strike the word and. And we're talking about section two B under the city manager. And that just makes sense to go on to the next sentence. Amendment two, page three, strike line two, the comma, replace with and. Amendment number three, page three, line three, insert number ten. And number ten goes to the supervision of the adminis, the supervision and administration of human resources under the city manager's office. To administer the human resources affairs of the city, including but not limited to little one, administering a civil service system, little two, conducting investigations and examinations for appointment or promotion in the civil service, and, and that should be little three, not little two. Admin, and that's, I guess, another amendment, making that little three. Administering certain other activities related to the payment, benefits, training, discipline, and retirement of city officials and employees. Right, and, right, exactly. Thank you, Alderwoman Finlayson. And amendment number four, page three, lines thirty-four to forty-two, striking six, where we have replaced, put it under the city manager's office and striking it out of Finance and Administration. I'm not going to reread that, but that should be a little three as well, one, little one, little two, and Roman numeral little three.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules Committee reviewed these changes. The philosophical thrust behind them is to move HR under the city manager, and these are changes that require the Rules Committee voted unanimously to support.
I would, I would entertain a motion to vote on all of them as a group, for the first one through four, is such a motion on the table?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. The next set of amendments are the Alderman Budge Proposed Amendments. I want the sponsor to speak to them at this time.
Sure. My amendments are to take a description of the finance director's responsibilities out of the sentence that says that there shall be a finance director and put it at the end of the paragraph that describes what the finance department does. And so it basically unmuddles the sentence and clarifies the responsibilities.
Is there a motion to approve?
This is both amendments?
Yes. One and two, correct.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The third is the Rules Proposed Amendments.
And, Mr. Mayor, the essential element here was to remove reference to a new department called Finance and Administration and return it to the finance department, a technical change.
Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adopt CA-1-16 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt CA-1-16 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Panley?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Bush?
Aye.
Alderman Peiyong?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda has been removed from the consent calendar. It is Resolution R-15-16, the Annapolis Business Academy.
All right, is there a motion to adopt R-15-16?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that Mr. Smith and Mr. Gutwold are in the audience. Can we please call them up to answer some questions?
Pete Guth, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Pete Gutwold, the Director of Planning and Zoning for the City of Annapolis.
Doug Smith, President of Annapolis Partnership.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming tonight and answering some questions. As we have all read recently, Lisa Thompson has departed from her position. And so in light of that change, I wanted to, I've heard a lot of rumors swirling, and I'd like to separate fact from rumor and to see what of those facts or rumors might have some impact on this grant.
Okay, well, I guess part of the rumor is that we have not stopped any funding. We are continuing to fund the money that has been allocated.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry, I guess one of the issues was whether there was, the funding has been stopped, and there's, we have not stopped any of the funding. We're moving forward, we're continuing to fund the Annapolis Partnership and the MAPS and the Main Streets program. But, and it is also currently in the current budget proposed right now. So we, right now, we just, we want to regroup and gather and talk about some of the goals and objectives associated with the Main Streets program, make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing in accordance with that, with, with the partnership with the Annapolis Partnership. That's essentially the whole deal. And it shouldn't have any impact on this grant or any, any, any association with what's going on with the Annapolis Partnership, so.
So one of the other rumors has been that grants the city has already received under this new program is going to need to be returned for some unclear reason to me.
I, I'm not aware of any of that, so.
We, we have not received any of the money from the state grant. It's been approved, provided we provide certain documentation, which we're doing, but you only receive money. It works much like the city grant works, that you have an expense, you provide a statement that said, please reimburse for this expense, and you receive money. There's no advance payment, so the state does not give out any money until you actually do something.
And you haven't received any notification from the state that those funds would be in jeopardy from Ms. Thompson leaving or for any other reason?
No. In fact, I talked to the state people today. They're anxious that we proceed and go forward.
And what if Ms. Thompson isn't immediately replaced? Does that cause any jeopardy to either the grant subject tonight or any other grants that you've received?
Well, Lisa was a very important person, and I think we're, we're all sad that she's taken a new job, although it's a good job for her. But it was, the time she was here was very apparent what good value she added because she brought a lot of experience to this. So we do need to replace that position. Short term, we have the committees in place, and the specific committee that would manage that state grant is the Business Development Committee. And they've already mapped their planning, how they would implement that program. So these are people that are here in Annapolis, business owners, that would define what that program should be, and then we'd implement it.
Very good. So given all that, no concern that if the city, or the organization receives... So given all that, no concern that if the city, or if the organization received the grant that's subject to this resolution, that you're still operating in, as if you were going to be able to use that money, you're going to attempt to hire a new executive director and go forward?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate all that clarification. If I could ask you one other tangential question. My understanding is that there was some conflict in this new entity between Main Streets being a program focused on Main Streets, not entire city, whereas Annapolis Business Association was very specifically meant to be citywide. And that's inherently in conflict. So can you speak to that and how, how your organization's going to resolve that conflict?
Sure. When we started, we thought we could do a Main Street program for the entire city. And as we started to implement, the state said, "That really doesn't follow a Main Street model." So we made an adjustment, and this was a couple months ago, and Lisa was very helpful in this because she's done Main Street programs before. So the key changes were to focus on the downtown core business area, making that strong, and that would benefit other businesses around the city. Right now, we've got 19 vacant storefronts, Main Street, Maryland Avenue, West Street, that we want to fill. So we've got plenty of work to do in the Main Street area. Once we got through that agreement on where we would focus, we've changed the bylaws. Those bylaws are now up for review at the state. So I think there was, we, we started off trying to do something bigger than we should have, and now we focused it on the Main Street area. So I think that's resolved on terms of internal direction.
So if that's the resolution, that you're going to focus on the downtown areas, isn't that, how is that different than what you initially started with, with just the Main Streets program?
It very much matches what was started back in 2008 for the Main Street program.
So doesn't that in essence just mean that the executive director is essentially an executive director of a Main Streets program, not a citywide business partnership?
Correct. Now, we're also, we want to collaborate with all the business areas around the city, so we're not ignoring that. And we're inviting them to all the training courses that we do offer. So we want to collaborate, but as far as focus on Main Street, it is on that downtown area.
Okay. Well, to that end, since you have the floor, would you like to speak about what this resolution would, this grant money would do for you and, and what your plans are with it?
Sure. The grant is intended to educate business owners on how to effectively use social media. You would think everybody is up to speed on that, but it changes so rapidly that we've now said, "Let's give the fundamentals to our business owners so that they can use social media to market their own business." We held two preliminary sessions a week ago on how to get Google to recognize your business. You would think that, that obviously Google recognizes your hardware store because you know how to do that. Very few business owners know how to get their business verified within Google, so when you call up, "I want an Italian restaurant," you want to be sure your Italian restaurant shows up on that search. So these are simple things we can do, and we do it in a hands-on way, so that when the business owners come into this session, we actually sit there with an IT person, help them get their site recognized, and they walk out with something they didn't have when they came in.
And that would be open to business owners throughout the entire city, not just the downtown?
Absolutely. Everybody.
Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. I think you've put to rest at least questions that I've had, and that have come to my attention.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes. Mr. Smith, question. Are some of these state grants mandated that you have an executive director on staff?
Not so much on the state grant, but the Main Street program specified by Maryland says the city, whatever the entity is, should have an executive director, and if at all possible, should be full-time. There's 28 cities in Maryland that have Main Street programs. They all have an executive director.
I just want to make sure that we're not in danger of losing anything in the interim before you all decide to hire someone to replace Ms. Lisa.
Well, I, I appreciate Director Gutwold's request that we sit down and review where we are, and we agree with that. But as soon as we are satisfied, the city's questions, we'll go forward with hiring program.
Okay. And secondly, where in all of this, and I guess you've kind of answered it, but kind of, I need a little more clarity. Where in all of this are the businesses that are outside of the Main Street partnership? And I'm asking because I know some of our War Three businesses have joined the Annapolis Partnership. So where does that kind of leave them?
They are invited to participate in all the programs that we have. They were invited to come to these technology sessions that we held earlier. In fact, I would say maybe 20, 30 percent are already participating on the committees that we have. And these are people, I would use Rita Siprak Wile, who owns Minuteman Press. She's not in the Main Street area, but she knows if that is successful, that will benefit her business. So she's a board member, she's very active in the organizations. So people that are outside of our area are interested in participating because they know that will help them.
Okay. All right. I have more of a comfort level now. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor of R-15-16, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Litman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is for the good of the order, beginning with the proposed motion to withdraw O-32-14, O-27-15, and R-38-14.
So moved.
Second.
Point of information, by withdraw, does that mean they're gone forever? In other words, the R-08-16 is no longer a resolution?
No, we're, we're voting on the forest conservation.
Right. These are the forest conservation...
What would happen to R-08-16? But that was also...
You adopted it.
He skipped it.
Oh. We took it out of order. That's, we're coming to that right after this.
Okay. All right. I'm no longer confused. Thank you.
No problem. So is there a motion to withdraw O-32-14, O-27-15, and R-38-14? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the proposed motion to reconsider R-08-16, itinerant merchant sales in historic District 2016.
Is there a motion to reconsider R-08-16 on second reader?
So moved. Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the, the next item, here it comes.
It's it. Robbers, robbers' rules, I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda is R-08-16, itinerant merchant sales in the historic district.
Is there a motion to adopt R-08-16 on second reader?
So moved. Second.
All right. And there's one amendment, and I'll let Alderman Budge speak to it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As many of you are aware, the weekend of, the Sunday of May the first was rather damp, and it rained out all of the street festivals in downtown. The Maryland Avenue Street Festival would like to reschedule themselves for June the 12th. And so I hereby offer an amendment to change their, the date of their first festival from May 1 to June 12. This has been reviewed by the Special Events Coordinator and the Police Department. They are both comfortable with the change, and it gives us enough of a time window to notify everybody and get everybody, get everything in order.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes. Are we referring to just the, the first Sundays? Because Maryland Avenue Street Festival is, was supposed to also begin on May 1st. Did that go?
No.
No? So, but there's no interest in postponing that to a later date?
The first Sundays events happen, the first, happen monthly anyway, or, and are authorized monthly. And we don't have a window left in May in which we can have a special event that closes up the streets because of commencements and Commissioning Week and Memorial Week. So the first Sundays have not asked to reschedule their last event, just Maryland Avenue.
Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt R-08-16 as amended on second reader?
So moved. Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Litman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.